Ready?
I sure am.
I'm ready too.
Oh, Chief, you're here. Fantastic. Now we can go. It is Monday, February 7th, 7:30. This is the Brainerd City Council. I call the meeting to order and ask Administrator Bergman to please call the roll.
Pritchett.
Here.
Stengline.
Here.
Erickson.
Yeah.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunick.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bedeau.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
First up, next up is item number four, the approval of the agenda. Any questions on the agenda? If not, is there a move to approve?
So, second Johnson.
A motion by Stunick, six motions by Stunick, one by Johnson. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. The item five is the consent calendar. This is an notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes and the motion will be adopted by roll call. Is there a move to adopt the consent calendar?
Move.
Second.
Motion by O'Day, second by Pritchett. Any discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Pritchett.
Here.
Stengline. Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick. Johnson.
Yep.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion is adopted. Item six is council committee reports. Item six A is personal and finance committee chairman, Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have seven items on the agenda today. The first one is the consideration for Country Manor Public Financing Request for Tax Abatement. City administrator informed me you want to give them.
If we could, can you, would one of you guys like to come up and just give, I know we, some of us saw you at the, at the EDA meeting, but this is a chance, we're kind of excited to have you here, maybe give us a little bit about what you're proposing.
Sure.
You do have to state your name and address, just like, just like before.
Sure. Well, thank you. My name's Brian Kelm, and I serve as the CEO of the Foundation for Healthcare Continuums, better known as Country Manor. And we've been here a few times, and I just say thank you for your warm reception each time we come up here. But we're working on a senior healthcare campus, and we're hoping that we can actually deliver on that. And we're here tonight to talk about tax abatement. But just a tick before we get to tax abatement, what, who's Country Manor? Country Manor formed in 1970, started as a 60-bed nursing home. We are now a 25-acre campus in Sartell. It has two, or 165 skilled beds, 241 senior apartments. We have a home health agency, we have a non-emergency transportation agency, we have a rehab agency, we have a child daycare, we have a 5,000-square-foot convenience store, we have a restaurant. And I might have missed a entity or two, but you can see it's a community, and it's about enriching lives. And that, that's our mission, enriching lives, and by providing superior healthcare and service. Once we ran out of acreage in Sartell, we expanded, and we went to St. Joe. And that project, Woodcrest the Country Manor, opened in 2017. And we have 84 units out there, mostly senior apartments, assisted living services, and 24 memory care with large gathering areas, so very similar to a microcosm of what we've done at Sartell. And we're here to talk about doing something similar in Brainerd. We're excited about it. It's 112 units plus a child daycare center. So we have 18 memory care, the rest are senior apartments, blocked off in different neighborhoods, depending on what folks' likes and dislikes are. And this will be our first time moving a daycare off the Sartell premises and having 92 children part of that, infant through school age. We're here tonight to talk about partnering, asking for help from the city council. When we open up a building, we come fully staffed. And so when we opened, we have zero residents in the building, and we can only move so many in at a time. So even if we have what our hope is, at least 50% reservations, it will take us a month or two to move in those folks. And it usually takes us two-plus years to fill our buildings. So in the meantime, we have a full slate of RNs, LPNs, home, home care aides, along with all the administrative support, dietary maintenance, housekeeping, and so forth. Child daycare will be opening up with the demand. We know there will be a fill-up. Our, probably our biggest challenge will be staffing, just being able to staff it, but we're excited about that. So what does that mean? Very heavy in expense day one. We have a full allotment. And so we are very vulnerable the first two years. And so that's one of the reasons why we're here talking. As you look at our performance, you'll see it's not a fat bottom line, it's a very thin bottom line. So for us, to get our financing approved, we will need to look at the ways to reduce costs, and having tax abatement is one of those ways. The other thing, just want to point out, the folks we serve are all on fixed income. So even though primarily they will all be private pay, they all live on fixed income. And we all are in a time where inflation is taking off, supply chain issues, staffing issues, which is raising what we pay our staff, all these things are going to be part of the discussion as we move forward, and it will look different than it did in the past. And so another reason is because of those unknowns, we're reaching out and hoping that you would consider tax abatement so that we could save some costs and, and have a better chance of being successful long-term in this community, which we're really excited about. So with that, I think I will stop talking and then turn it back over for questions.
Sure, thanks. Any questions of Mr. Kelm? You're free to, you've escaped.
Okay.
Thank you. You did too good a job.
Check in tomorrow at noon.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for coming up again. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for allowing that little, so everybody could be caught up to speed, and turning it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the motion out of committee is to direct staff to prepare the necessary documentation, initiate the statutory process to approve 45% tax abatement for 10 years for Country Manor upon completion of the project, and further to direct staff and the mayor to work with Country Manor to ask the school district and the county for tax abatement, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunick. Any questions, Mr., or comments, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, we came up to 45% over 10 years because the request for funding was $1.7 million. In the city of Brainerd, the city is about half of the property tax bill. We had Baker Tilly run some numbers for us on what this proposed development might look like. And if we give 45% abatement over 10 years, it looks like we can close that gap of the 50% of the financing, and hopefully the school district and county come on board. If the school district and county don't come on board, they may be back, and we may be adjusting that number. But this looks like it'll be 50%.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any further questions or discussions? Hearing none, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Good luck, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Johnson, please continue.
Mr. President, next is a police officer resignation, and the motion is to accept Officer resignation, Officer Joshua Clausen's resignation effective January 25th, 2022, an ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stengline. Any discussion, Mr. Johnson?
This brings us down to 24 officers in the, in the chase for 27.
With two in training.
With two in training.
Any further good news? Hearing. Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of, accepting the letter of resignation with regret, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is approval of a contract with Widseth for police cold storage facility. And I move to approve the attached professional services contract with Widseth in the amount of $3,500 for the public safety cold storage facility, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunick. Any discussion, Mr. Johnson?
I'm in favor of the motion, and apparently we need Widseth just to kind of help match the codes and stuff, even though we're throwing up a pole barn. I mean, you'd think we wouldn't need him, but we do. But I just want to remind everybody, Mike Bestrow was not police chief when this happened. In 2019, the police department came to the city council and said, hey, can we have this plot of land and a $16,000 fence? And the council said, well, aren't you going to need a building? And they said, no, never, there will never be a building needed on that parcel, fence and grass. And we're good to go. Well, here we are, two years later, building this building. But I, I support, I support the contract with Widseth because we need it to build the building.
You're blaming this on Chansky too, are you?
You want me to put a muzzle on him?
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you. The next one is approval of professional services with contract, contract with Widseth for design services. And this one, the motion is to approve the professional services agreement as presented.
Have a motion by Johnson.
Second.
Apparently a delayed second.
Hesitated.
Time warp.
Thank you, Mr. President. You may be concerned that we are signing a new agreement with Widseth for the parks and streets building because you may think to yourself that we just did that last year. It turns out this is the agreement for the same project, we just didn't approve it when we should have, before the project started.
Thank you for the clarification. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next one is some temporary employees in the Parks Department. And the motion is to ratify the hiring of 2021, '22 parks winter temporary employees as noted on the attached listing, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunick. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up was an annual review and approval of the investment policy, and we reviewed it, and we really liked it, and we are going to move to approve the policy as presented with no changes.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Stengline. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to pass the, this motion over to Alderman Stunick to make around the.
Oh, we are, huh? You should have sent me a memo.
I thought you said we were on the same wavelength.
Yeah, but you're crooked. Okay, the motion out of committee is to authorize staff to publish the request for proposals for events and community action, green space or arboretum and senior citizen programs. This is all from the charter tweaks that we've done through the Charter Commission.
And you move.
And my motion is to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Stunick, a second by Stengline. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
I'd like to speak against the motion. If you'd like to speak for it first.
I am for it, 100%.
All right, okay.
So don't speak against it.
No, I, I voted no. I, I asked when we formed this subcommittee that these meetings be, be held publicly, be held open in the public. And it turns out that the meeting was held last week. It was not publicly posted. And even worse than not being publicly posted, there was an employee of one of the organizations interested in responding to the RFP, attended the meeting. But other organizations that may be interested weren't allowed to attend that back-room dark meeting. I don't want any part of that process. I don't think it's very open and honest to the public when you're operating that way. So I voted no on moving forward with, with this RFP.
Yep, yeah, okay. Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Back to Mr. Stunick.
I think it probably should have been posted in the paper and made the public aware. However, I didn't, no, no offense to the dark, dark room thing, there was nothing shady, nothing else. It was an informational, informational thing that was set up by the council to get the process moving for staff.
Okay. Any further questions? This is the, this is, just to clarify, this is the request for proposals for anybody who wants to apply for the money. And so this meeting, this dark room meeting, was, was just to put together the proposals, yes?
To give staff authorization, correct me if I'm wrong, General, give staff authorization to put together the proposals, which were presented at our meeting.
Tad Erickson were.
Tad Erickson, I, Jennifer, and then Dan Berry did come from the center. Because I'm the liaison there, I made her aware of the meeting. I also made the mayor aware of his meeting, of the meeting, because he's the mayor and the director of community action, and he chose to be the mayor, or whatever.
Okay. Any further discussion? Tad, you were there, anything to comment on?
Yeah, I'm on the, the subcommittee. I was at the meeting. It was a good meeting. We discussed the RFP, gave staff direction moving forward, and I'm going to support the motion.
Okay. Any other? No? Okay. Hearing no further discussion, this is just a voice vote. If you are in favor of authorizing staff to publish those requests for proposals for events and community action, green space or arboretum and, and senior citizen programs, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And then one final thing on this RFP process, I've received three or four phone calls, I'm sure you guys have as well, about this process and people supporting the center. And there's a lot of confusion out there and potentially intentional misinformation being spread in the community. The city council, and there's, there are people here, and there are people watching at home, so I just kind of want to put it out there, that the city council did not vote to defund the center. We have held no votes on defunding the center at all in eight years of my time being here. What we did last year when we amended the charter is we removed language that was mill levy, which is a term that hasn't been used in property taxation in decades. And we changed mill levy to be 1.5% of last year's total levy. And that amount ends up being about the same of what the mill levy is. We didn't defund anybody, we changed a few words in the charter. The reason there's an RFP proposal here, the reason we are renegotiating contracts, hasn't anything to do with the charter. It is that there were 10-year contracts signed in 2012 that are up 10 years later in 2022. And those contracts need to be renegotiated. They need to be talked about. We can't just cut checks to people that we had agreements with in the past without having a current agreement. What the council is trying to do is not secretly defund the center. Ooh.
Or anybody else.
Or anybody. Maybe community action.
Yeah, no, 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 no. Oh, no, no, no.
What we're trying to do is just operate in good faith with taxpayer dollars. We aren't lying to anybody about anything. We are trying to manage the taxpayer dollars effectively and honorably. And that's, that's all I have for my report. While, and Bevins? Mr. President, thank you. End of report.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Bedeau.
I have a question about a different item. Did you, have we heard anything back from Lakes Area Media Collaborative?
We sent them a notice, a question on August 25th. We have yet to hear from them.
Didn't get a check?
Thank you. No checks yet.
All right, let's move on to Safety and Public Works Chairman Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. Safety and Public Works just had three items tonight. First of which was a, whether or not to approve an agreement for storm, storm drain stenciling with Discovery Woods Montessori School. Motion coming out of committee was to approve, approve the attached agreement. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, second by Erickson. Any discussion?
Yeah, this, this was basically brought up by, is an idea for the Montessori School to paint some of the surrounding sewer drains and grates, and put different messages on them saying, don't throw garbage in me. I go into the river. They're going to focus on specific sewer grates that lead directly into the river. So to think, to think about the number of people that don't actually realize these go right into the river, it's something that we don't really think about much. But I think it's a pretty good idea to let this school teach these kids, and hopefully these kids can teach some people not to throw their cigarette butts down the sewer drain anymore. That's all.
Perfect. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Please proceed.
Next item was whether or not to approve sewer flow monitoring proposal from SEH. And I so move that we recommend approval of the letter proposal as submitted by SEH for the flow monitoring study.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, second by Pritchett. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day?
Yeah, this is a $65,000 budgeted item for 2022. It's an ongoing study of our sewer systems and where they're connected and where they're not connected. I don't know, Paul was mentioning something about blowing smoke through the sewers and things like that. There was a lot of information. So if you want to ask him about any of it, feel free to ask Paul Sandy.
Does he cheat or tone?
Chong.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The final item was a presentation of the five-year capital improvement plan, and just as an update. This is, this is the meeting where the fifth year out is presented to the, the committee. And most of those streets end up in the northeast section of town. Kind of spread out throughout northeast. So that map is made public. We looked through some of the changes that have been made. Most, most of these changes are grant money that's coming in or state aid projects that are, you know, work better this year or next year, along with existing projects like South Sixth. And then we, we did have a discussion on whether or not to implement the street scan implementation starting this year, and we decided as a committee to push that out. So we just had everything scanned, and just to save cost, maybe next time we're, we're going to scan our streets, we, we look into not only this vendor but other vendors and see if we can have them compete a little bit. But motion coming out of committee was to approve the plan as updated with that change of pushing back the street scan until 2024 to be revisited on that budget, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Day, O'Day, a second by Erickson. Any discussion? Anything to add? Nothing? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Anything else, Mr. O'Day?
End of report.
All right, we will move on to item seven, which is unfinished business. Item 7A is council comment on the draft zoning map and table of uses. Mr. Chansky, anything you'd like to add to help us through this?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. President, in my January 18, my staff report, that was in the January 18 council packet, I had list, I had provided a draft zoning map and table of uses. In that report, I said that the planning commission was beginning, going to be considering the map and table of uses during their 19th, January 19th meeting, and then I'd be bringing it back formally for your own comment, giving you the opportunity to formally comment on the map and the table of uses during this meeting. So that's what we're here to do. The copy of the map, as well as the table of uses, and then a sheet sheet just describing the certain, the different zoning map districts is in the packet. Quickly, just kind of a reminder of where we are in the process. We are kind of getting into that wrap-up process. Hopefully this week, I should be receiving a full draft of the zoning code for myself and James Crombeck to review, get that back for our original comments, and then hopefully I'll have a full draft out to you as the council and the planning commission, hopefully sometime next week. At the end of the month, planning on February 23rd of holding a public open house, and then a work session that the council will absolutely be, is invited to attend. And then the, hopefully the zoning code coming back for the council for formal adoption in March. So that's where we're at, and if there's any comments, questions on the proposed zoning map or the table of uses that is attached, I can take those now. You can email them to me later. I just wanted to give you that formal opportunity to make comment.
Mr. Chansky, when would you expect to put this before the council for a vote, in a month or two?
In March. So it should be about the second meeting. We intend to hopefully have this before the council because there will be an ordinance amendment for the first reading, and your second meeting in March is our goal.
So there's your timeframe for comments. Any questions of Mr. Chansky? Mr. O'Day?
On the south, southwestern section of the town, the lively land, there's, there's land currently for sale that I'm aware of. At least it was for sale.
Correct.
It's listed right here as rural, rural living one. And if you go down to the description of rural living one, what does it say here? There are no plans for future expansion of urban services to the property. I think we had a agreement in 2005, or 6, 7?
So.
That would be a different type of neighborhood with, with, with those services. And we have pipes running all the way down Buffalo Hills Lane to that area. I'm just wondering if we, if we change the, the zoning on that specific spot.
So I can, may I answer that, Mr. Mr. President?
Yes, please.
Uh, so what that means, when we're saying there's no current plans, is apart from a development, the city is not planning on putting water and sewer in there tomorrow, next year, until a developer were to come along, and then they would be expanded. At that point, once a developer's come along, the city has approved a development, there's been a purchase development agreement, a developer's agreement's been put in, that's at that time, the property would be rezoned at that point to match that development. But we're saying right now, we're essentially saving, this is the, the least impactful zoning we have, and the idea is we're trying to save this for a development of some kind. You know, someone can still use it, we still have to give people rights to use their land, so they could still put, you know, a house out there on 40 acres with a septic tank right now if they wanted. But if someone wanted to come and develop it, come do the proposal, we would rezone it to whatever the proper zoning is for that development, and then utilities and such would go in. So pretty much what we're saying with this development is that we're not promising, if you wanted to put a hall, house on here on 40 acres, the city is not promising that we will bring you water and sewer as a, as a, as a one-off house.
Okay. I would, if I may.
Yes, please.
I would just, before you finalize that part, I would visit the contract that was signed 15 or 17 years ago. Just because if there's, if it's already intended to be a certain way, and then we rezone it, or zone it a completely different way, it's technically already up for development. Why not list it as such? Or maybe you add that into the, the rural description, that it's land available for developers, so that developers can read that and say, oh, they want to develop this, instead of looking at it and saying, they don't want anything here. Just a thought.
Looking at that absolutely.
That's an excellent comment. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Chansky before we move on? This is just FYI at this point, but looking for comments over the next week to two weeks. All right. Hearing no further questions or comments of Mr. Chansky, we will move on to 7B committee resign. Is there anything else, Mr. Chansky, we should do on that? Nope. Okay, it's an FYI for now. 7B is committee resignations. We're looking for a motion to accept with regret, Mr. Wayne Erickson, past chairman of the EDA.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Pritchett, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Next up, boards and commissions, call for applicants. Mayor Bedeau.
Holy heck, here we go. As always, we are looking for applicants for the following positions on committees, a very important part of our city. You can visit us at www.cibrainer.mn.us/boards. The following positions are available. KBT, Cable TV Advisory Committee, one term expiring 2021, two terms expiring 2022. Charter Commission, one term expiring 2022, one term expiring 2025. HRA, one term expiring 2022. Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, three terms expiring 2022. We also have one for the EDA expiring 2022, one expiring 2026, and one expiring 2027. So if you are interested in economic development, now is the time to get in on the ground floor of that wonderful organization.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, Sean, in two weeks, can we get an update on cable advisory?
Sure.
Just I hear good things are happening. I, we brought up the, the request from the media collaborative, but I, I think there's good things going on.
Yep. I can give an update towards the end, staff report.
Okay, there you go. Perfect. All right, and I've got, uh, as council president, one planning commission term to expire 2023, and we do have two positions available on the ad hoc water tower fundraising committee. Item eight is new business, a consideration of supportive housing village, PUD general concept review. Mr. Chansky, anything you'd like to bring us through to help us through this one?
Absolutely, Mr. President. So Vicki Kenny submitted requests for a concept review of proposed planning and development for supportive housing community. This would be held, this would be constructed, uh, kind of the boundaries would be between Northwest Fourth and Northwest Second Streets, and between Northwest Fourth and, well, actually that should be James and Jackson Streets. Um, a little bit, because this is something new for the, for the city council. Something, what the general concept plan is, the purpose of it is to provide an opportunity for an applicant to submit a plan to the city, showing basic intent and the general nature of the entire, of the entire development before incurring substantial cost. Uh, the concept plan serves as a basis for public comment, so the proposal may be publicly considered an early stage. Again, the idea is a developer is, is interested in doing development, coming in and getting essentially the appetite of the city for that development. Um, it's important to note that the planning and development concept approval only provides direction for the applicant as they proceed through the PUD process, and with the next stage would be development stage. It does not convey any development rights or privileges to the applicants. So the planning commission did consider this application during their meeting on January 19th. They didn't make a recommendation to the city council. They devoted necessarily to express their general support for the development. However, some of the information that they received, they felt like they weren't, wasn't thorough to the level that they were comfortable supporting it as it was being presented. They had a site plan that is in the packet. Turns out that site plan was not like the site plan, it was kind of more of a conceptual site plan. Um, so because it wasn't the actual proposed site plan, they did have some reservations about supporting the development as it was presented in their packet. So what they did, again, their, their motion was to express their general support for the concept, for the development, while, while requesting that the applicant resubmit more specific development, development plans to include a definite site plan with an emphasis on addressing concerns over development density. You know, how, how many housing, how many units are they going to actually have on, on the property? Neighborhood harmony, how it, how this development is going to fit in with the Tyrell Hills neighborhood, as well as some of the other multifamily housing in the area, as well as detailed phasing and slash development schedule prior to proceeding to the development's, a plan stage. So kind of resubmit concept to give them a little more information before we give full support to move ahead toward the development stage where they do the really, the, the time and money intensive of actually planning this development. So with that, Mr. President, I know Ms. Kenny is here tonight, if you, if you'd like to hear from her. Otherwise, I'll take any questions that the council has at this time.
First, we'll start with any questions of Mr. Chansky of what, what the request is from city councils this evening.
I have more of a technical question.
I think this would be appropriate to ask before we make a motion. After we make the motion, we're going to look for comments for or against the motion. So if you've got questions, or would like to hear from, the applicant is here too, and I, and, and maybe that would be helpful.
I just have one specific.
Yeah, please, I'm, I, I think.
What is the minimum house square footage allowed in, in the city limits?
So how the ordinance currently is required is minimum is 750 square feet. However, through the PUD process, you are allowed to alter from that. And so they could go smaller. What's being proposed, from what I understand, would be, you know, stick-on slab-built structures about 400 square feet that would meet the Minnesota building code requirements for a structure that size.
That's your question?
Yep.
Okay, any other questions of staff? Okay, anybody have a motion they'd like to make? Yeah, we, we have to make a motion to do something, just so you know.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that the council concurs with the planning commission's expression of general support for the project, as well as obtaining more information on def, on the definite site plan, particularly in regards to density, and what the applicant would do in regards to addressing neighborhood harmony. And then a more detail, more details on the phasing of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson.
Second.
And a second by O'Dea or Pritchett? Second, motion by Erickson in support of the, of the planning as at, as laid out by the planning commission, second by Pritchett. So now we can discuss the motion. Is there any comments on the motion? Mr. O'Dea?
So there's a lot of stipulations in this motion, and I, I went back because I was curious about this project, and I, I watched the, uh, planning and zoning just to see, get a better feel of what it is. And it seemed to me like it would have been a lot easier just to say no, because the project clearly isn't ready. So I, I'm not going to support this motion. I think this developer can always come back with a, a more thorough idea. I think in looking at the project itself, it would make a lot more sense to have it next to one of our factories that can't find enough workers, uh, instead of an area that should be higher density residential. So I just don't think it fits for where it's proposed. I'm not going to support it.
Thank you, Mr. O'Dea. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I agree with Chairman O'Dea. I think, I don't agree with general support of the projects. I don't think there's enough information out there. I definitely agree with encouraging the proposer to come back with a more thorough plan that maybe we can support or not support. But I'm not going to sit here. The only real specifics there are here for the city is to have us build them a park next to this neighborhood and then allow them to build a bunch of tiny homes. I don't think we're in the business of building new parks currently in the city of Brainerd with how much deferred maintenance we have to tackle in the coming years. So generally, I don't support this, but I would like them to come back and not abandon the idea entirely, but come back when they have something more detailed.
Thank you. Mr. Stunek?
I'm not going to repeat what Councilman O'Dea and Johnson said for the most part, but I agree with them, and I'll be voting no to.
Thank you. Anybody else, Mr. Mayor?
So I did watch the planning and zoning meeting, and it took about an hour to craft the motion. And I think, uh, Mr. Jaeger can attest to that. Confusion would be my response to this. I think that there is some good here, but there were so many questions coming out of that group that, that what I see on the paper is general acceptance or agreeing with the concept, but there were so many questions, and, and you see in that, what do we have, four or five questions that are listed in that? Four of them? Four questions. Lot of discussion about each of those items. And so coming to the council, I would definitely say that, having watched that, that group had its questions, showing support, but still having questions. That's kind of what I was getting from that group was that general consensus of we can see where this could work, but there are a lot of questions as to what this, what would happen with this. So just more of a comment than anything.
Thank you. I, I will speak on the motion and also be voting against it. The motion to me seems to be, we support this, and we'll worry about the details later. And I, and I get wanting to do that. I understand it completely. However, what I hear others say is, maybe we should have some of the details first. And that actually makes more sense to me. I'd much rather see some of the details. I'm not 100% sure this is even the right site, but regardless, I'm going to vote against it for now because I, I would rather be cautious and hear more of the details first. So. The only ones who spoke is you, Tiffany, unless we want to go round two. Hearing none, I don't lean to force, put you on the spot.
Just really quickly.
Oh, absolutely.
Um, having made the motion, I'm going to support it. Um, I understand the concerns, um, having several, having watched the planning commission, the level of discussion we had, um, the number of questions we had. I understand your positions on that. And I, I too was concerned with the, the direction coming to the council from the commission, and expressed that at the meeting, but I'm going to support it, having made the motion.
Thank you. Any objections to calling a roll on this? And Mr. Bergman, if you could?
Pritchett?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Dea?
No.
Stunek?
No.
Johnson? And Bevins?
No, the motion is defeated. Anybody else care to make a motion on this project? If not, we'll leave it up to the applicant and the planning commission if they want to work something else out. Next up. Can't get this up. There we go. Okay, this is from Finance Director Hillman on the, looking to set a council workshop?
Thank you.
Why, why don't you explain to what this is?
So this is the, the ARPA, the ARPA funds that we have received. Final notification came out in January. The city should get about $1.47 million. We have two years or three years suspended until December 2024. So staff felt it would be good to have a council workshop just to get everybody thinking about what we're going to do or what council desires to do with these funds.
Excellent, and we're looking for when? Any suggestions?
Um, staff suggestion was Monday, February 28th at 6 o'clock.
Okay, any objections to that? Okay, we'll take a motion to approve that time and date for that workshop and that item only?
So move.
Motion by Stingline?
Second.
By Stunek? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, aye, opposed, same sign. We have a workshop. It is, repeat the time and date, please?
Monday, Monday, Monday.
Monday?
Six o'clock.
Monday, February 28th at 6 o'clock in the council chambers.
PM.
And we will adjourn our next meeting to that workshop as well.
Okay, any, any idea of time wise, hour?
Hour.
How long does it take to spend a million and a half dollars?
I've got some spent now.
Just give it to me, we don't even have to have a meeting.
Depends on what department you're in.
Calm down, kids. Item nine, public forum, time allocated. For citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the city council. Time limits may be imposed. And you certainly are welcome to come up and tell us how great the senior center is if you'd like. We'd love to hear from you. You guys have been here for every meeting, please come on up. You've got a good horn to toot.
Deanne Berry, I live at 18610 Smith Road, Brainerd, Minnesota, but I work at 803 Kingwood Street. And I kind of came, um, and yes, we do great things, but this is our February newsletter. We had received the proof to print, we held it, and if you notice on the bottom of page two, we did add a little blurb and provided your contact information. Uh, no one said anything about the council defunding us, um, but they were encouraged to reach out to you and to let you know what they do at the center, what they are passionate about, and to let you know what difference the center makes in our community. Um, so if there were things that were said beyond that, um, I can't take responsibility for those. I'll take responsibility for what's in the newsletter. I think we were fair, I think we were truthful. We owe our members to be transparent, and that's what we were doing, and will continue to try and do. I invite you to come in, take a tour, find out who and what we are. You know, if you come for donuts, we sincerely thank you for supporting us in that way, but we're way more than donuts. We have a lot going on, we make a big difference in people's lives, and I think you've probably heard that in the last couple of weeks. And they're sharing of their passion, not out of, hopefully not out of frustration. They're sharing because they have a place that is their own, that they can make friends, that they can work through some of those transitions, transitions of life that happens as you age. No one's asking you to feel sorry for them, but someone's asking you to have compassionate for the place that they have in your city. They know what we have is unique. They know that not every city is fortunate enough, especially going through COVID. Not every city was able to keep their senior and aging facilities. So we are very fortunate to have that, to have a place where Monday through Friday, 50 to 54 activities, events, and programs happen. You'll notice on the front cover, we're doing a Valentine, Normio and Julian play in a dinner. We have some wonderful opportunities, and we're just asking for support to keep that going. So thank you very much and look forward to working with you. And if there was misinformation, I apologize, but did not come from me. Thank you.
Ms. Berry? Mayor Bedell had a comment.
Yeah, I just, I just, well, no, I just wanted to make one comment. Because of my position with community action, I don't feel comfortable returning questions from this particular thing while the negotiations are going on. And I've spoke that with Kevin Stunek, again with Ted Erickson, our liaisons. I just want to make sure that people are aware that I, while they're sending me, I am reading them, and I do appreciate the comments that are coming forward, but I don't feel comfortable returning those, those comments because that should go through our liaison, uh, just because of my involvement on another organization's involvement in it, so.
Send emails, whatever.
Kevin, you going to fix this?
I tried to make a motion a couple of weeks ago just to keep everything to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's a lot of poor seniors out there, got some bad information.
Not for me.
Well, but you got to fix it.
That's your job, Kevin.
Your job, liaison pal.
Call through the membership list.
I think you should call through the list. Everybody should get a Valentine.
Moving on, staff reports are next.
All right, next up, item 10, staff reports. We'll start over here with HR Director Schubert. Fire Chief Holmes?
Just one quick thing to add. Sunday, uh, February 13th is 150th anniversary of the Brainerd Fire Department. So just to kind of highlight that, and our firefighters are truly honored to serve the city and then other, the other communities that we serve. So working on a few projects to kind of highlight the history of the department. We have some retired firefighters that are helping with that. Chief Stunek has been helpful with, um, all his collection of newspaper articles and helping identify people in pictures. So it's been a really great opportunity to just really look back at the history of the department, and so hopefully we can continue to serve for another 150 years.
Excellent, thank you. You know, I have to, I have to apologize and hold off moving on the staff reports because we were in a public forum, and I never officially closed it. Anybody else in the audience wish to speak under public forum? Anybody online?
Just Eric. Nope.
No? Okay, then we will officially close the public hearing at 8:19 after two staff reports. Sorry, thank you, chief. Anything else, chief? I felt bad because I, it sort of cut off people who might want to speak. Attorney Langill?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Community Development Director Chansky?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Uh, Public Works Director Sandy?
Nothing further, thank you.
Finance Director Hillman?
Nope, I think that Jennifer will address the census in her report. She addressed it in her, her report to the council and just that we don't have to change any of our wards. And we're working on securing locations for the 2022 election as well.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Sounded bright.
Online, anybody online? Eric, I saw you were there. Anything you wish to add?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything from the, from the police department?
Nothing, Mr. President, I want to hear this.
I saved them for last. All right, not last, second to last. Sean?
It's a bit oversold, but I can give you an update.
Are you kidding? There's four people still alive that have cable.
And we can't get anyone from the committee? Um, so where are we at? The 15? Uh, the fifteenth is the next cable TV committee meeting. Our one citizen member probably won't be able to make it, so if there's anybody out there just itching to be on that committee, we need you pretty bad. It's about to get interesting. Um, we own a whole bunch of equipment, it's being set up. Uh, still working on getting the cable writers into the college and getting the legal agreement done at the college, but uh if the dispatch can plug their ears, maybe like a June first kind of timeframe to be online or not online, on TV, if we can swing it through all the other loopholes here. Um, and I am now meeting with CLC staff every other Monday, opposite of the council meetings to keep the wheels turning, I guess. There's a lot of i's to dot and t's to cross, but few months. Uh, I hope that's exciting news for Chief Bastel.
He's practically coming out of the sea.
So that's what I got.
First, first night popcorn at Mrs. Gobes. Public meeting, we're having the meeting at Mary's house. Sean, you've just done a great job working on getting us back online. What a disaster that became, unfortunately, but thanks for all the extra help you've put in. I've been in a lot of those cable TV meetings that really went nowhere, and until you took the the cable TV remote away from us people, you did good, so thank you.
That's why he's the alphabet director.
We need a few more, you need a few more letters there. Administrator Bergman? TV.
Um, I did submit a report uh in your packet, um, but a couple of things in addition to that. Uh, we did meet, Paul Sandy and I this afternoon met with Cheryl Hills uh from the Region Five Development Commission. They are moving forward uh with the plans, are going to be working with WITSEF to build out the annex, so just wanted to give you a update on that, that we continue to work with Region Five on that. Um, they are waiting awaiting some uh grant funding opportunities, so more to come on that. Um, and then um maybe in response to the discussion earlier on the RFPs, um, that maybe instead of a subcommittee, um, Mr. President, if you would want these proposals, uh, once the proposals are submitted, to go to Personnel and Finance Committee, uh, maybe something we want to consider that way it is fully public um and open to the public, and those proposals could be reviewed.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very very much, Administrator Bergman. Uh, next up, the um mayor's report. Mayor Bedeau?
Well, well, well. I just have two items. Uh, the first is that uh it's that wonderful time of year uh where things turn green, including the beer, and it is time to celebrate St. Patrick's Day. Uh, just a heads up. What are you talking about? Uh, downtown Brainerd's St. Patrick's Day celebration will happen on Saturday, March twelfth. Mark your calendars. Parade will be happening at one PM. There will be kids costume contest, there will be some involvement from the downtown businesses. Uh, you can have drink and food specials. The more important part of this, though, is that for whatever reason, Cross Lake screwed up, and they're doing theirs on the nineteenth. So if you've got a float that you have prepared for the St. Patrick's Day parade in Cross Lake, I'm gonna tell you what right now, you're gonna give me a call, and we're gonna get you in the Brainerd parade a week early. You're gonna get a test run, you're gonna kick the tires, and check the rubber, and make sure everything's running, check the candy throwers, make sure everybody knows what's going on. You're gonna come into our parade, you're gonna have a great time, and then you're gonna go over there and you be in theirs as well. But you're gonna start with us, and it's gonna be amazing. So if you're interested, uh, you can contact us, uh, myself specifically, and we'll get you involved in that. We'll have information online as well. Uh, secondly, and this is probably more important, we've been talking about Big Sev, the sledding hill at Hitch Wayne Park. We've been talking about this nonstop. Big, big deal's going on over there. It's called Big Sev for a reason. We put some sleds over there. People been using them, people been loving them. They have expired. The sleds have expired. Well, because here's what happens, Big Sev does not care about your sled because it's called Big Sev, it's coming after it. Eh, it gets a little cold, they crack, it happens, anyways. We have put a call out to people, if you have an extra sled, yeah, come by, drop it off. It has happened. Three sleds have showed up into this sled garage since we've run out of sleds, so let's keep that going, people. But more importantly, I'm sitting at my house, I wake up in the morning, and I get a message that happened at two AM, and it was a gentleman, his name is Dennis, and he said, I see that you have accepted challenges for races down Big Sev. And I said, you know it, big buddy, here we go. Dennis said, I my son's coming over on Friday, I'd like to challenge you, I'd like to race you, and I'm gonna beat you. And I said, here's the deal, Dennis, let's go. What's your son's name? The son's name, we'll keep it, we'll keep that private just to be safe. We're not gonna just announce kids' names. Anyways, son, father, at the hill, ready to rock. Mayor Bedeau waxes up his sled, here we go. I look back, he's not even started, I have whooped him, whooped him down this hill. First ex- first ever challenge of the mayor at Big Sev, I'm just gonna announce Mayor Dave won challengers zero. If you're out there, you want to challenge me, there's still time.
I've got crutches at home.
End of report.
How do you top that? Heck with the rest of us.
I think I'm gonna be ill. Don't you have anything to do? I'm gonna start with Gabe Johnson, and Gabe, any truth to the rumors that we're cutting off all funding for community action?
That is misinformation, grade A misinformation.
That's what I heard, I read it in the senior center bulletin. You're up, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two items, I noticed a sign on Greenwood Street heading into Brainerd on the snowmobile sign trail that says, warning, Brainerd City Hall hates snowmobiles. I didn't know we adopted this policy, I don't know, but maybe we should take a policy of neutrality towards snowmobiles at the city, I'm not sure. And then secondly, uh, the cable TV, excellent work, Sean, and I will say, one of the people who called me about the senior center was also concerned about getting council meetings back on cable TV, so there's a bit of a Venn diagram there, there's some overlap. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chief Stunek, you still with us?
I'm just, I'll try to take care of him next meeting, I have nothing now.
Tiffany Stingline?
Uh, Region Five met, we elected a new uh chair, John Benson from Cass County, and a new vice chair, John Lupke from Jenkins. So if anybody is curious.
Thank you.
Chair and vice chair. And uh, thank you, mayor, for defending the honor of the city and the sled. That'll be the end of my report.
One, zero.
Snowmobile lives matter. Mr. O'Day?
Can we make a statement?
I just want to congratulate the mayor for embarrassing children in front of their parents.
The kid lived in Baxter, I heard, just so.
Then it's fine.
Okay.
Then it's fine. That's all.
Mr. Pritchett, well, how's retirement? You looking for something to do because so is the mayor?
Yeah, apparently. Um, mayor will be accepting challenges for wrestling matches, boxing, and other contact sports uh throughout the month of March, being that it is St. Patrick's Day. Um, so nothing else to report.
God, Mr. Erickson, you've got to have something for us.
Nothing more tonight.
All right, and I will finish up with uh Public Works Director Sandy and I will be on the Northside Residence Program tomorrow evening discussing Northside Street repairs, so that should be exciting if you're looking for something to do, something constructive to do. And Mr. Stunek, when the mayor was talking about the parade, he was not talking about getting rid of all your tootsie rolls from the Fourth of July that are now green, they're not acceptable for St. Patrick's Day, so just keep them to yourself.
I've been saving them for years.
I know you have. All right, so we have uh concluded the agenda, we are now going to move in to look for a motion in a moment. We have uh for the press and people watching, we have three closed sessions, we will adjourn to each one, we will reconvene out of each one, and then make any public motions that need to be made. There's three sessions. Uh, the first one is pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D oh five subdivision three C three to develop or consider offers for the purchase of property at the Northern Pacific Center. Then we'll come out of that closed session, we'll move into a second one uh to adjourn to the closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statutes thirteen D point oh five subdivision three B for attorney-client privilege to discuss James M. Carlson versus the city of Brainerd pending litigation. And the third closed session after that one will be a pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D point oh five subdivision three A to conduct the city administrator's performance review. So we are gonna look for a motion on item thirteen to adjourn to the first closed session. Motion, Pritchett, second by O'Day, we will adjourn in five minutes for a closed session, and we'll take a five-minute break.